All right. Good evening. Thank you for being here. And we are going to open up this evening with invocation, and I'll pass it off to Kathleen Crone.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Dwayne Moore to the podium to say tonight's prayer.
Heavenly Father, we welcome your presence into this chamber today. Let your wisdom and peace rest on every council member and all who serve our city. Guide each decision with your truth, and let justice and compassion lead every word in action. Cover this place with your protection and unite our hearts for the good of all who call Grants Pass home. May everything be done here today bring honor to you in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. And now if you will, remove your hats and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. This evening, this evening, the first thing on our agenda is a resolution adjusting the water rates. And we have a presentation from Jason Kennedy.
That went fast. I wasn't ready. Thank you, Council President, councilors, and members of the public. Today, we do have a resolution for your consideration to adopt a proposed water rate increase to support the debt service required to complete the replacement water treatment plant. Just as a little bit of background, on January 15th of 2025, the City Council did approve the guaranteed maximum price for the replacement water treatment plant and its tentative financing plan. Adoption of the GMP provided council with cost certainty and locked-in pricing on over 90% of the project, with only the intake structure work remaining unknown. And largely, those questions centered around the requirements to comply with the FEMA BRIC grant. On February 5th of 2025, council did approve Amendment 9, which was to begin the analysis and design work on the intake structure and all of the work to comply with the FEMA BRIC grant. That was short-lived, however, because in April of 2025, we were notified that the BRIC program had been canceled. This eliminated $50 million of funding, but did decrease the number of conditions that the city would have to comply with as it progressed the design for the intake structure. In May of 2025, the City Council gave direction for staff to work with our rate consultants to develop a rate option that would support completion of the water treatment plant. An initial analysis by the FCS group showed that the additional borrowing required by the loss of the FEMA BRIC grant could be accomplished with implementation of a very minor rate increase. Previous decisions by council had laid the groundwork for the strong financial position that the city had found itself in, and the amount of monies that we've been able to save. In addition to the changes in the financial policies that were implemented in our finance department, allowed us to really save up quite a bit of money. But where we find ourselves is that our coverage ratios are not sufficient for lending and bonding agencies. We do have sufficient resources to pay the debt service, but the coverage ratio is low, and I'll explain that a little bit later. So falling back even a little bit farther, in 2018, the City Council took action to increase the, or to implement the new water rates. Part of that was including a residential lifeline consumption tier, trying to put in a rate that would allow for very little consumption and very little cost. Fire standby rates were adjusted at that time based on the cost of service. It looked like at that time that when they were created, they were being charged a little bit higher than they should have been, based on their impact to the system. Water plant replacement fee was implemented, and this was implemented to cover the cost of debt service, or partially covered. And the desirability of that was that it sunsets at the conclusion of the debt service, when it's no longer needed. It is not tied to the Consumer Price Index, so it will not increase without council action. All other rates at that time were set to increase by 5.28% per year for five years. And as you recall, only four years of that increase was implemented. At the September 2nd, 2025 workshop, council did ask several clarifications to the rate that had been presented. Those questions including providing longer periods for, for projection to better understand the impacts of the rate over a longer period of time, providing commercial rate impact examples, and then also, could we spread out that rate increase over a larger number of years and what that would look like? So what I wanted to tell you is in the back of your packet, those projections, the long-term projections are there. They don't fit the screen very well, so it didn't work to put them in the presentation, but they are in your presentation. Otherwise, we're going to focus on the five years following the rate increase. As we talked about previously, the rate model is very complex, making it difficult to ferret out individual impacts of any one change. The proposed rate increase has three moving parts. There is the base rate and the commodity charge component. There is the treatment plant replacement fee component. And then there is the potential of increased or same urban renewal agency contribution to the debt service. As each of these parts are changed, it changes the various outcomes to differing degrees. So as part of compiling all of that data, we were coming back to, and we discovered that the rate models for the three different scenarios were providing different coverage ratios, and that was making them unequal. In other words, they were not, because they weren't getting to the same place with coverage ratio, we were over or underapplying a potential rate increase. So we wanted to have time to work through that. And so on September 2nd, we went back to the rate consultant to rework that. It was also discovered, as we were looking through there, we weren't sure that we were accurately reflecting all of the debt that we had already incurred through Business Oregon, which made a big difference in how much future borrowing would be, which then lowered that debt service payment. And it turns out, we were underestimating the amount of debt, or overestimating, underestimating, overestimating how much we would have to borrow in the future, excuse me. So by lowering all of those, the upshot is, we were able to lower the rate increase that we had previously presented to you. It's not much, but we were able to pull out a full 1% out of that rate. So we do come back to you today with three scenarios similar as we had previously, except they are all lower. So Scenario 1 would be to increase the URA contribution, increase the treatment plant replacement fee over three years, and one 3% increase this, this January, and hold the Tier 1, which is the lifeline water rate, at 81 cents per unit for three years. Scenario 2 is very similar to that, except that we implement three 1% increases over three years. Gets us to the same place. And then Scenario 3 would be not to increase the urban renewal agency contribution, increase the treatment plant replacement fee similar to the others, and hold the Tier 1 water rate at 81 cents, but we would implement three years of 2.5% increase for, 2.5% for three years. And we're going to look at what those look like individually, and then we'll wrap those up and show you them side by side. The Scenario 1, which gets it all out of the way in January of this year, would increase over the, one, two, three, four, five years out to 2029. Four years of increase would take an increase of $6.04 per month overall. Scenario 2, which would be three 1% increases, would phase that in a little bit slower, takes us up to 6.05%. They're identical, just rolled in over a different period of time. Scenario 3, of course, is going to be a little bit higher, because we have to do that 2.5% for three years, but it equals a $774 increase over the, over the same period. So the urban renewal agency was adopted with the replacement water treatment plant project as a key component of the agency. And per the currently adopted budget, the urban renewal agency is contributing $438,000 per year for the debt service, roughly half of what was identified in the plan as a possible contribution. Per the adopted plan, the agency could contribute up to $17 million, roughly $18 million over the course of the, over the life cycle of the agency. That would equal about $895,000, roughly double of what we're currently contributing. Current URA revenue is $2.66 million per year, so this will not hurt the agency. We'll still be able to put money away and sponsor projects. I just put that in there to show those dollars, and it's clearer in your. So there is no cost for implementing this to, to the city, just a little bit of time for us to get that implemented in the system. And the alternatives are to adopt one of the three scenarios. Hopefully tonight, one, two of them are increasing the URA contribution. Should you choose that option, we would come back to a future meeting with an URA action that would delegate those funds, or obligate those funds to the, to the water plant. We do have this scheduled tonight. You can defer it, but I do want to stress that we will be starting debt service offerings, I want to say, in December, January. I'm looking at JC, that we're going to start that process here very, very quickly. And we need this rate to be in place prior to that time, so that when the bonding agencies are looking at us, we are looked at in a much more favorable light. And with that, I would take any questions that you have.
I see Rick.
Thank you, Jason. So in Scenario 1 and Serial 2, the basic differences, one is a 3% increase, the other is a 1% increase?
1% for three years, yes.
Right. So they're both identical in that respect?
They're identical, yeah, over the time period.
The thing I'm hiccuping on, there's only a penny difference between the two of them.
Yeah, because they're so small, compounding interest doesn't really kick in on it. If it's over a longer period, the compounding would show up as a larger number, but because of that, it makes, they're, they're almost identical.
But if within five years, you only have one cent difference?
Correct.
Even over 10 or 20 years?
It's going to be a little bit higher. If you look on the back sheets, you'll see it grows a little bit more, but not significantly. Because they end up so close at the end of that four or five-year window, they grow at about the same rate from there as well.
So I almost feel like we're splitting hairs trying to decide between 1 and 2. So from your viewpoint, and operational viewpoint and so forth, do you see an advantage of 1 over 2? Are they basically identical?
I think they're basically identical. The, the thing that might be desirable about the 3% upfront would be that it's done, and we don't have to worry about a future rate increase. The bonding agencies are going to look at that and go, oh, look, you've taken all the action that you need to. Your coverage ratio is good. We're, we're ready to lend you money.
Okay, that's the answer. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Kathleen?
So Jason, just to clarify, it looked to me like Scenario 1, it was a highest initial impact.
It is.
And then it lowers over long-term.
Yep.
But the second one, the difference was, is that it's a low initial impact, and then minimally becomes higher.
That is absolutely correct.
So it sounds more reasonable to do, maybe for the taxpayers.
Yep. And both are great options. As I said, they get us to the same place, and I believe having that resolution where you've adopted it, it, I'm, I would guess it would be looked upon the same by the bonding agencies, or very close to the same. The only thing I will say is that I will, the customer service groups would prefer to get one increase out of the way also, because they get phone calls every year when they get those, but that's minor. They, they'll do that for us.
Rick?
So further elaboration on that, when we go to the bonding agency and they're looking at 3% versus 1%, is there a possibility we would be looking at a better rate?
I'm looking to JC. I don't know that they, that we would, because really, it's going to be based on the overall capacity of the city and the, and the coverage ratio that we get to when the debt service falls due. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, and I would say probably, if you look at the actual very, very minutia of the detail, the increase in the water treatment, actual replacement fee is more impactful than the potential percentage increases.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? See none from council. I'll now move to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience?
Thank you.
Who would like to speak on? All right, come on up. Please state your name and your city of residence, and you have two minutes.
Grants Pass. Hiking units to pay for a new water plant. At your workshop, city manager and staff went straight to hiking our already high unit rates to satisfy lenders that we can pay the debt that we are about to incur. But higher unit rates bring lower use, which staff habitually fix by hiking unit and base rates even higher. Lenders will be satisfied if you would return our rate system to what worked for 50 years, paying all the overhead and monthly bills that do not rise or fall with production, including debt payments, maintenance, and contingency funds with our monthly base rates. And charging one low unit rate to pay costs that rise and fall with the production of cleaned water. The time to start doing it is tonight, by voting no. Water is not precious. It is vital. Rationing our water is killing plants, animals, and people with droughts, fire, and floods. Rationing water by high unit rates has returned our weather to the time before water plants were built, when cities burned and forest fires were huge. We don't want our city to burn. We want it to be clean, green, and beautiful like it was in 1985, when we watered our yards, because water was cheap to use. Thank you. And I have some leaflets for the council.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to speak on this issue? See no one. I will bring it back to council for a discussion. Rob?
You know, I was not a little, I guess I was a little surprised, you know, when we're looking at whether it's 1% for three consecutive years, or 3% upfront is essentially the same thing, because the compound interest is so small. With that being said, that's what Jason told us, that being said, it would just seem to me, if, if it's six to one, half a dozen of the other in that regard, the general public would probably prefer a smaller increase the first year, which is 1%, and second 1%, plus 1%, rather than 3% one year. So from the public's perspective, I just can't see how 3% upfront is, is a better deal for them, when in fact, it gets us to the same place. So I'd go for Scenario 2.
Eric?
I find myself surprised. I agree with Rob Pell. It's, Scenario 2 is, I think, the way, the way to go.
Other, Kathleen?
And that was kind of my point with my earlier comment, and I too will be in favor of Scenario 2.
All right. Seth?
Well, I'll just make a motion to adopt Scenario 2, as presented.
All right. I have, and I have a second from Rick. Any other comments? All right, I will take a roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
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 And so that is for, oh, oh, and I, I, oh, I'm sorry, I also get to vote. And, sorry about that. So I am going to vote no, because I'm worried about the increases, but the motion passes 6 to 1. And so I believe staff has direction. And up next on our agenda is a resolution approving the purchase of real property at 124 Northwest Midland Avenue. And we have a presentation from city manager.
Good evening, Council President and Council. So just to give you a quick background, the Urban Rural Agency owns approximately 8.3 acres between Northeast Sixth Street and Midland Avenue and Northwest Washington Boulevard. Recently, the June 16th meeting, Urban Rural Agency Board gave staff direction to acquire consulting services to prepare an opportunity plan for the Washington Midland Property Complex. And we're excited to be moving forward on that process, to be able to provide an opportunity for us to really determine what is the right fit for that when it comes to urban renewal and getting public comment. With regards to this property, which we own the majority of, there are actually five tax lots that are adjacent to or surrounded by the property that are not in city ownership. One of those properties is 124 Northwest Midland, Site J. It's located here, shown with the arrow and an X. The property is a former doctor's office. The building is in relatively good shape, and we believe that ultimately, once purchased, we may be able to lease that property until such time that the city ultimately has a good idea and concept of what might happen with the ultimate urban renewal project that'll come about. But that could be a couple of years from now. Council did provide direction to staff to try to acquire the property, and I'm happy to say that we have the ability to do that within the parameters council provided. The cost implication of this property is $417,000. It is slated for today, from a call to action, to align with the escrow calendar that we have in place. The alternatives are to approve the resolution or not approve the resolution, and there's a potential motion behind me.
All right, do I have questions? Rick?
Thank you, Erin. Do we have an approximate acreage for that parcel we're looking at? Like, is it quarter acre or half acre?
Yeah, I don't have that on my notes slide, but it is, it is extreme, what's that? Point 1.
Point 1?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Rob?
How would we go about establishing what we feel is a fair rent for that, especially since it's relatively short-term?
A fair what?
Rent.
Oh, fair rent. Well, we'd do a market, a market study to determine what that rent might be, and we have yet to really determine, I think, truly what that would be, but we would come back to council with the concept of what that rent could be.
Other questions from council? See none. I will ask the audience, is there anyone who would like to speak on this issue? All right, see no comments from the audience. I'll bring it back to council for a discussion. Kathleen, and then Rick.
I don't have a question. I was just going to make a motion. Do you want to say something first? Okay. So I moved to approve the resolution for purchase of real property at 124 Northwest Midland, Suite J.
And I see a second from Seth. Any further questions or points of discussion? All right, we'll start with a roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
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 And yes. And so we have a unanimous vote and direction for staff, and thank you. And next up on our council agenda is a resolution creating new job descriptions and amending non-bargaining and GPEA classifications. Presentation also from city manager.
Thank you, Council President and Council. So in front of you this evening is a consideration to approve a resolution that would create two new job descriptions and amending the Grants Pass Employee Association and the non-bargaining classification plans, the current ones that we have in place. This does support council's goals of infrastructure by restructuring the organization, improve efficiency and effectiveness in city operations. Just some background, so you have an understanding where we are. It really is to ensure that services can be efficiently and effectively delivered to our constituents. Periodic review of staffing levels is undertaken to understand what our performance is, how it can be improved, to enhance and make more efficient. In the fiscal year '26 budget process, the Public Works Director did make full recommendations to provide newer enhanced services to our constituents. In that process, the recommendations that were provided were these here behind me. One was to add two new utility workers to begin a meter reading program, which I'll talk about. Another was to add one new utility worker for wastewater collections to meet, ensure the cleaning and inspection targets will be met. And then the two in front of you today are creating a new water distribution supervisor and creating a new geographical information system, which we'll call GIS from here on out, supervisor, and removing the GIS coordinator position. I think it's important to note that all of what we're talking about today with the creation of these two new items are not creating new FTEs. We're reclassifying two positions into these two positions. So we're not asking for an increase in FTE. The increase in FTEs has already occurred and is already in place, and that's with the two bullet points of adding two new utility workers and adding a new utility worker for wastewater collections. As you may recall, the main purpose for the utility meter reading occurred when we were having difficulty getting a contract for meter reading services, which we'd been doing for almost 40 years. And recently, we had to go out and do an RFP to see if we can get some additional services that way. And unfortunately, we were not able to get anything that would meet our, our, our needs, and the cost associated with that was nearly double the cost of our current contract. We recognized that we could take that on internally and do it in-house with two FT at a cheaper, at a cheaper rate. That's why those two positions were made. The city was able to quickly mobilize and convert from the contract meter reading to in-house services, and I just want to do a little shout-out to Craig Coonert, Kimberly Gasperson, and Rod Vineyard for leading the charge on that. Those three individuals worked very quickly in order for us to not have a skip in the services that we provide. As part of this process, it was determined and planned that the division would benefit from an addition of a supervisor reporting directly to the superintendent with the addition of these new responsibilities. With the addition of the two meter reader positions, the distribution division is now made up of 9.33 workers, including one utility worker 3, six utility worker 1/2s, and two utility worker 1s, and a portion of the utility 1/2 locator position. The new supervisor that we're asking to create will administer the meter reading and the other programs for the distribution division, allowing our superintendent to focus on construction capital projects and overall operations of the distribution division. Continuing with the water distribution supervisor, the addition, additional position does not increase staffing, as I mentioned. What it does is it takes the division, which used to have two utility worker 3s, and it just takes one of the utility worker 3s, and it's reclassifying to the supervisor position. So again, it's on an FTE add, it's just a reclassification to better align what we need from a line of communication and support within the organization. Due to the technical requirements of the position, the water distribution supervisor would be placed on the existing non-bargaining salary schedule at a UC-6. Moving to the GIS supervisor position, the Grants Pass GIS system has been in place since '91, and it's grown. It's something that started out relatively as a niche thing, and it's gotten to a point where we use it for everything. Consider the maps that I showed during strategic planning update, and the cool graphics that we can pull up and you can use. That's all, that's all based on GIS and data information. Nearly every city department and, and the public relies on data that's driven through GIS. So GIS is a growing field, and it continues to grow. The current division currently includes a GIS coordinator, a GIS technician 2, and a GIS technician. The GIS coordinator position primarily includes many high-level duties, but it lacks any kind of formal supervisory authority. The proposed GIS supervisor position builds on the skills of the coordinator position and adds supervisory and budget requirements. The GIS supervisor will perform higher-level GIS functions like database and licensing management, in addition to managing the two GIS technicians in that division. Another important piece of this is span of control. We have an amazing Public Works Director that has a We have an amazing Public Works Director that has a large span of control, currently directs and supervises 10 staff colleagues. Creating the GIS supervisor position will transfer today supervision of the two GIS technicians from our Public Works Director to the supervisor, reducing the Public Works Director's direct reports to eight. The position will be placed as a UC-41 on the existing non-bargaining salary schedule. So what does that look like from a cost perspective? Cost for the positions already included in the budget. It was something that we were planning for and budgeting for. We planned for the additional FTE, which we have hired, and we had planned for the reclassification of two positions. Again, we're not adding FTE, we're just reclassifying two. The GIS supervisor position is funded through capital project funding and billing for services. So if a department is needing GIS services, they are billed for those services, therefore that's where the funding comes from. The current GIS coordinator position salary range is $63,000 to $80,000, and that's over a seven-step process. The GIS supervisor would go to 10-step, and it would be $66,000 to $89,000, which provides for just a minimal amount of impact to the overall budget. The distribution supervisor is funded through water rates. The unfilled utility worker three position was at, and currently is, at $53,000 to $67,000. The water distribution supervisor would be placed at $71,000 to $96,000 over a 10-step process. This is tentatively scheduled for November 5th today. It can be deferred to Council direction. However, we have it on the books for today for you. The alternative is to approve the new job descriptions and amendments to the two classification plans or not approve that, and there's a sample motion behind me.
All right, any questions? Rob?
So Erin, you made on Slide 8, you made a comment about the distribution supervisor will be placed in the existing non-bargaining salary schedule at a UC-6. Could you rephrase that in English, please?
Sure. So we currently have, and this is a total separate issue than what the non-bargaining task force has been working on. This is strictly, whatever happens with that, happens with that. We currently are operating with a salary schedule. Each salary schedule has bandwidths of salary pay. The UC-6 is a band in the salary schedule for non-bargaining. There's a UC-6, there could be a UC-4, and there's other things. And so they're placed in there with positions that are comparable in responsibility, and that just happens to be in that bandwidth. But it's for this current, for what we're operating under right now.
So UC-6 is the job and the job responsibilities, or UC-6 is the specific person who would be placed in that based on their experience? Which one of those is that?
That's a great question. It's the first one. UC-6 is the job band and the job responsibilities.
Joel, and then Rick? Yes, Joel and Rick.
So if I understand you correctly, Erin, the water distribution supervisor would supervise the up to 9.33 workers, including the two meter reading positions, is that correct?
Yes.
And right now, who supervises those 9.33? What is the span of control of the person who supervises them?
We'll have Jason answer that, that's a little more detailed.
Technically, no. He will probably supervise four of those nine people. Those current nine are being supervised by the superintendent. He's gonna pick up the meter reading, the water quality, backflow, some of the other ancillary programs, because the water distribution has a lot of ancillary programs to keep the water safe and keep it flowing. So he'll be supervising those people and reporting to the superintendent. The superintendent will continue to supervise all the people involved with construction and the overall operation of the water system.
Okay, so then, thank you. The present supervisor then is going to be actively engaged in the contracts for the new water treatment plant? So what is the span of control of that position now, and what would it be afterwards, after we make the change?
So that superintendent, the distribution superintendent, it won't change a lot. He's still responsible for the entire distribution system.
Sure.
This is just allowing him and giving him the ability to shift some of his personnel that are reporting to him directly to another supervisor who's then be able to provide a much better focus on those programs to ensure that they're operating correctly. And then he can focus more on those bigger picture, ensuring that the plan reviews and the construction stuff is all getting out on time to keep the development moving and that everything's getting done in accordance with state regulations. So the span doesn't change a lot there, it just shifts some of the work to a second person.
Sure. So then the span of control in terms of supervision would be under this system, under the new system?
Yeah, it's probably gonna end up being a six and three, or seven in that range. It's gonna go down on one and up on the other.
All right, okay, thank you.
Rick?
Thank you, Erin. So on the supervisor with the reduction in responsibility, does that present a cause for freeze in the steps for that supervisor, losing those employees?
They still have that same responsibility. They still hold the same responsibility, and we don't see that that would move, and their job description would not change.
Okay. And then you gave the step ranges and so forth on that, showing how it would change. But if we're looking at the past and looking at today with the changes that we're proposing here tonight, is there a dollar figure, even though the money's in the budget, is there a dollar figure for what would be the change in the payout to all the employees?
With the two positions and where they may be placed compared to what they are now, I don't think we have the ability to answer that at this time.
Yeah, one is vacant. The GIS coordinator is vacant, so we were hoping to get this change implemented before we recruit, because we want to recruit for somebody not only now with GIS, but supervisory skills. They're different positions, so it's a different recruitment. On the distribution side, there's three people on staff who qualify for that position, and until we do an internal process to evaluate who gets that position, we don't know where they will get placed on that salary schedule based on where they're at currently.
So on the GIS position from current to the new supervisory GIS, what is the difference in the pay scale, do you know?
Well, it was approximately $6,000, I believe. You're talking about the current coordinator position at 63 to 80, and the GIS supervisor going to 66 to 89.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
I had a question in terms of the pay scale. Was there a system that, what system do we use to figure this out as far as, did we use averages? I mean, can you explain that process?
Yeah, we did not change, do anything with the salary schedules themselves. Those are the salary schedules that have been adopted by the collective bargaining agreements in the city, and so we haven't changed, done any change at all. We are just placing them in one of those categories that are already on the existing salary schedule, based on the responsibilities.
Thank you.
Joel, did you?
Good presentation, Erin, thank you. Do the creation of these two new positions create any additional wage compaction issues?
Not, no, not that I'm aware of at this time.
Other questions from Council? Seeing none, I will ask if there are any questions from the audience on this subject?
Can I speak on more than one topic?
Just on this topic?
Yes, but on another topic later?
Oh, yeah, on, oh, this is the last...
Open forum, I guess.
If you...
I want to speak on this topic, but later.
You can.
Yeah. It's all right, it's all right. Please state your name and your city.
Ken Hadama. 50-plus years in the Valley, 40 years as a businessman. Government programs are not known as a beacon of efficiency. We all know this, we see it everywhere. We know right now the bid, contract-wise, doesn't look real good. I would suggest possibly looking into tracking the costs very closely and putting this out to bid three years again. Maybe three years again after that, keep everybody honest. Great example, I like to get out of the office once in a while. I was hauling transfer, which is dump truck and trailer, for about a week, get out of the office, see people, whatever, and we're hauling down Foothill. The county's got their nice new articulating mower out there. Boy, they're working hard. They were the talk of the truck-driving crowd. At best, four hours a day, at best, no exaggeration. Lots of laughs and giggles and carrying on on the radio. I did call the commissioners and had a chat with a couple of them. This is what I'm afraid of. Just, I recommend taking a look at this, putting it out for quote in a few years and see where we're at again. If it's an outrageous quote, keep going on the way you are. If you get a better quote, think about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other audience members who would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I will bring it back to Council for discussion. Joel?
Well, I've worked in the public sector and I've seen that, what the gentleman described, and I've also seen the exact opposite of it as well. It depends on the organization and the supervisor and the employee's ethics. And so it's not a generalization that it's all one way. It's just like any other organization where you got good things happening and sometimes you got bad apples. So anyway, the span of control seems to be reasonable to me. The increase in costs, given where we're at and what we're doing and taking on additional services and meter reading and what we're taking on with the water treatment and span of control, I'm gonna make a motion unless there's other discussion. Okay. I moved to create the position of the GIS supervisor and delete the position of the GIS coordinator. And establish the position of the water distribution supervisor, not add any additional, what's the right word, bodies to the city payroll, but we do this position management and do what makes sense.
Do you want to maybe shore up your motion there?
Sure. I'll move to create the positions of GIS supervisor and water distribution supervisor and amend the classification plans.
Thank you. And do I, I haven't seen a second yet, I see a second. And any other points of discussion from Council? I will take a roll call, beginning with Joel.
Yes.
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 And I will also vote yes, so that's a unanimous vote, and I believe then staff has direction with that, and...
Yes, thank you, Council.
All right. And then next up on our agenda is an appointment, a motion appointing one member to the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. And I believe you have, I believe you have blue sheets if you will, if you will vote and sign and pass them on down. All right, all votes came in, and they were unanimous, so congratulations to Tracy Decleblem. And if I...
Ask for a motion to...
Oh, oh, I asked, oh, so I asked for a motion to approve Tracy to the appointment to the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. I see a motion from Rick and a second from Eric. And without, and we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Council Chrome.
No.
Yes.
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 And I will also vote yes, and so the motion passes. And so now, for real, congratulations to Tracy, to the appointment to the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. And next up on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on items not related to a public hearing or council action item for the Council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the Council as one body, not to individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, Council will have the opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and Council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander threats or other personal attacks. Signs and placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have a question regarding any government-provided service or current city policy, please contact the City Manager's Office in an attempt to resolve the matter. And up first in public comment, we have Mike Pelfrey.
Excuse me. Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Mike "Oh, shut up" Pelfrey, and I would like to talk a little bit about what's going on in our city when it comes to corruption, because we are unfortunately in what we call corruption season. And what I mean by that is, and I have sent an email to the city, to the Council, and I've offered my testimony to exactly what this corruption is. I can tell you that I can bring receipts. I know exactly what I'm talking about, because if you don't know me, you know that I am very involved in this city when it comes to the homeless industrial complex. And I can tell you that there are individuals within our community, some of them are leaders within our community, that have attempted to take advantage of the homeless industrial complex. There are people in our community that are trying to make money off of our homeless problem. As I said, I would not make this gesture to you or offer my testimony, and if you were willing to give me more than two minutes, I am happy to do it from this podium, because what I will tell you and what I will share with you is the absolute truth of what's happening within our community. And I have to tell you that there are certain City Council members that are sitting on this dais, that I'm not gonna say that they are 100% involved, but I can tell you that just their actions and the way they act and the voting that they have, they have used, or I should say that they have, I'll just, let me see how I want to say this. Their voting record and their passion for a particular subject and a particular subject is...
Thank you.
Very revealing. So my offer stands.
Up next, we have Rika Brown.
Rika Brown, Grants Pass. We need sprinklers to make rain in summer. I came to Grants Pass in the fall of 1984. Water and sewer utility bills had $25 for base rates. $20 for water, $5 for sewer. Units were literally pennies on the dollar. Come July and August, our utility bill rose to just over $26. We had thunderstorms nearly every weekend in the summer of 1985. I loved thunderstorms, but I wondered, why only on weekends? It looked like, if it looked like rain and I didn't water, it did not rain enough to make a difference. A Grants Pass gardening superstition was born. If it looks like rain and you don't water, it won't rain worth a darn. 16 years later, in landscape management class, I learned that most residents of Grants Pass didn't have automatic sprinklers and watered only on the weekends. Our teacher also told us, sprinklers evaporate half of what they throw before it hits the ground, and evaporation is waste. But evaporation is not waste. It is the first step in the water cycle, evaporation, condensation, precipitation. Without enough... is the first step in the water cycle, evaporation, condensation, precipitation. Without enough sprinkler evaporation and transpiring plants, we get no rain in summer. The last three years excepted because Hunga Tonga threw 150 million gallons of seawater into the stratosphere on January 15, 2022. It's still coming down. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Catherine. Oh, all right, all right. And so, we have Ken-
Hadama.
Hadama. Okay, thank you. I knew I was not going to say it correctly, so I appreciate it.
Ken Hadama. I'm here to speak a little bit on the homeless thing. I tend to be a little passionate, so there's no axe to grind with anybody personally. Don't take it that way, even if I'm a little direct. Oregon is ranked fourth in the nation in homeless. Coin did a story yesterday. Portland homeless is up 61% in two years. This is a blue state politic personal responsibility problem, period. You can look at the red states, the graph is not even close. So, with the homeless 150-bed thing, we all know it's mandated, but it's going to anchor the homeless in this community. So, I want to switch to enforcement. For example, devil's slide, fire chief, council, who's responsible for cleaning that up? I've been contracted to the Forest Service for 30 years, fire. I have ridden dirt bikes in that area for years. If you get a fire started, that is running to the top in the right time of year, and you're going to burn some houses down on starlight. Why has that not been cleaned up? I don't know if it's you, the council, the city. Where's the DEQ? Look at all the human waste being dumped there. If I put an RV on my place and had an open sewer, do you think the DEQ would be there? Let's talk police department. I watched, had lunch and watched this summer with the chief of police sitting here. The guy, the clown was throwing the trash over his back as fast as he could at the police thing there, and an hour later, it's still there. Why was there not an officer out there making him pick it up? Yesterday, when I left the meeting here, or Tuesday, I'm coming back from In-N-Out Burger, I stopped right over here. Three homeless people come out and walk right through the middle of traffic, stop all the traffic. And then, a bicyclist comes behind me, I'm in the middle lane, he goes around me to the left, passes the car to the right, goes to the left, he goes to the right, stops in the middle of the road on the right lane, blocks the traffic, and he's glaring at the car behind him. Where's our enforcement? We need to start putting the hammer down, not harassment. Put the hammer down-
Thank you.
Like you would do on a normal citizen. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. All right. Up next, we have Fitch.
Good afternoon. My name's Mr. Fitch, returned resident. Two years ago, I told you you were going to get your assets frozen. Instead of you listening, you attacked me. And six months later, you got your assets frozen. Shows that you don't listen. Last month, I gave you a notice, and I got cut off because I ran out of time. But I need to let you know that Tanawa Downing and Jessica Saxton is going to be taking over the litigation of this court case. A notice to the agent is a notice to the principal. You're now officially a felon. Did you know under 18 USC Code Title IV or subsection IV, it's a federal crime for anyone, including your public officials, judges, DAs, and law enforcement, to conceal a felony and reporting it. Whoever having knowledge of the actual commission of a felony conceals and does not, as soon as possible, make known the same to a judge or other civil or military authority shall be fined or imprisoned to three years. This means, if a district attorney knows about a judicial misconduct, civil rights violation, retaliation, or other federal crimes, and fails to report it or act, they can be criminally liable. I hope you ignore what I'm saying. Because an attack by a group on an American civilian on American soil can be construed as domestic terrorist acts. And you've got a lot of vigilante terrorist acts in the Grants Pass Park Watch that got you in your hell that you're in today. I fucking love it. Have a great day.
Next up, we have Bob McGuire.
Thank you. Goodbye. Bob McGuire, lifelong, third-generation Grants Pass. Boy, I can't think after that one. Well, geez. Yeah, well, what was I going to say? We, well, I'm really against this crook that's going to come down here and this Elk Creek. I think he's going to take advantage of, take advantage of our city. He's, he's a, he's a very, he's a shyster. He's, I feel he's going to come down here and everything. I've watched our council, our deals. I've watched it three, four times, and I've picked pieces out of it. He don't have, he don't have, he don't have property. He's not going to get a piece of property over here. And if he somehow weasels his way into it, he's going to destroy, he's just going to destroy that. And it's like I talked to Buy Mart, and Buy Mart, they told me today that that's their number-one store. I tell you what, I feel that you and Blabbermouth, I tell you, you guys are, you know, I think you're just dropping it, dropping the ball, just to get rid of it, because you don't want it. You just want to get rid of it. And Pathways really needs it, because they've been doing this for a long time. And they need to get, get a chance to do it.
Thank you. And up next, we have David Dapper.
Thank you, David Dapper, city resident. And I don't know that it'd be great to put it across the street from Riverside Park, where kids play. But my main thing is, it's hard to sell to any neighborhood when they see what's going on around this. We need to get the panhandle, I sit down in the court, or the post office, Monday and Tuesday, if it's not raining. And, I mean, the drug dealing going out there on the, on the south side of the courthouse, towards the rear, it's bad. There's guys that can't even stand up back there. And drug dealer John, you know, he makes his trip back there. And until we can clean up around what we got here, for the neighbors here and the businesses, there's no one that's going to want this in their backyard. The best thing we can do is provide the area around it, the panhandling and whatnot, and outside of it, get that straight. And then you can show a neighborhood that, hey, you know, we're on this around it. This, you're not going to have to be dealing with this every day in your house. And I just think the best way to get a neighborhood on board with this is to show something different than what we're seeing here. Because I, my heart breaks for these people that live around here, and the businesses. And like I said, the courthouse, there's a guy panhandling that can't even hold his head up. He just, you know, and then the drug dealer John comes up and asks if he's got his money, right in front of the court, or the post office. Anyway, that's just my idea for how to get this idea sold. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Ruth.
Ruth Daly, Grants Pass. I'm here representing myself tonight. I'm a mother, a grandmother, an aunt, a sister, and a friend of many people that have experienced the effects of homelessness. And I'm here to express my profound sadness at the continued rhetoric in our community and from members of the council, of our unhoused neighbors as less than, as criminals, and as unworthy of anything more than the tired cliche of people's poor choices and an inability to pull themselves up by their bootstraps. The rhetoric seems to have reached a zenith as heard in the words of Kevin Dar and Jeremy Ford, as they recently spoke in front of the BCC and District 7 School Board. Though they've always spoken of running people out of town if they're not from Grants Pass, despite men coming from all over for their programs, Dar now claims that he will have data to know who is who so that their goal can be reached. I have a hard time believing that Built for Zero supports using data that they recommend sharing to assist people for such a purpose. Additionally, if Dar and Ford's suggestion of AI tracking of those leaving a shelter and allowing community members having access to those videos isn't enough, they double down and present the offer of software to prevent school shootings, now equating our unhoused community members with school shooters. Stoking the flames of fear is the key to worse conditions in our community, not the antidote. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is it for our, for our public comment. I did want to very quickly say that the devil's slide area, that is owned by, by the train, the name, the name of the train, the railroad. And it was cleaned up recently by a group of volunteers. So, and I do know that it takes a lot of time to get a permit to do that, so that's just a little bit of information about that. And next up on our agenda is our consent agenda. And we have consent agenda items, A, oh, it's a little bit different. So, A through, oh, it goes on, that's, it just goes on a little bit further. A through P. And do we have any? Eric?
Just wanted to see if we can talk a little bit about the minutes for the Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting, if we could, before we approve of the consent agenda.
Absolutely.
So, on, for P, we had a discussion with the, the district attorney regarding Senate Bill 48. And just wanted to point that out to everybody in the public, that there is, in fact, a discussion that we had, and it's on audio. You can find it in the, on the city website. And it's a very interesting subject regarding Senate Bill 48, regarding the proverbial revolving door of criminals, that after they get arrested, basically, it is a, it is a criteria for them, of how they can get out. Usually, what ends up happening is if they don't meet a certain, a certain criteria, then they get let go. And so, the public doesn't realize that this is a, this is a Senate bill in Oregon that was passed long ago. And automatically, people think that, or the public think that this is, this is, this is a fault of the district attorney, or the police department, or anybody else that they can point fingers at, when in fact, it is a Senate bill that's, that's causing a lot of these things to happen. And I, I don't know if that's a good enough explanation. I don't know if Chief wants to further explain that a little bit, or if he has anything to add.
No, I think you did a fine job, counselor.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to talk about anything else if you have any other questions.
Thank you. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just wanted to see if there's anything that I left out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I'm looking for possible motions for the consent agenda. Kathleen?
Didn't go on. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
As presented, thank you. And I saw a second from both Rick and Eric. I don't, I don't know who was first. So, we'll start with a roll call with Joel.
Yes.
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 And I also vote yes. And up next on our agenda is matters for mayor, council, and staff, mayor and council, to begin with. Are there any matters from mayor? And I, don't he believe he is with us online? Okay. And from council, comments. Rick?
I made a comment the other day when we were discussing the proposed park off of Beacon and Hillcrest the other day. And I had lunch with Aaron on a 101 today. And discussing that subject further, I think it may merit bringing that piece of property back to the city as, in a workshop, to discuss what alternatives might be worthwhile considering, other than proceeding forward with the direction we have right now. If nothing else, it would just confirm the direction we do have, the city council still confirms that, because that park has been proposed for quite a while. But maybe we'd like to look at some different concepts that might be worthy of consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there maybe two other counselors who are interested in doing that? Or comments? Rob, and then, and then Joel?
I'm just giving a thumbs up to Rick's idea.
I'm not sure what Rick's talking about, but it's worth explaining for the other users.
I see three counselors, so maybe if Rick wants to kind of reiterate what it is you'd like to direct to staff?
Because Aaron and I had a discussion, I'll let him explain.
Well, what I'll do is, it sounds like what we'll do is, we'll schedule another workshop in the future for Beacon Hill Park discussion, and bring that forward to council.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other matters from council? And so, I will turn to staff?
I just wanted to do a little shout out to some of my colleagues out there. And today, I wanted to highlight Grants Pass Fire and Rescue. We, of course, had an extremely successful Halloween party downtown, and that was a great opportunity, where the YMCA and River Valley downtown hosted this trick-or-treating event. And our fire department went down and set up a little booth, and walked around, and visited, and mingled, and handed out, get this, 50 pounds of candy. Yeah, that was, that was quite a bit. And even between calls, the engine was brought in every once in a while when they could, to let families and kids take photos with the truck and everything. And it was a really great event, and it's really nice to see that kind of participation and everyone involved. It's just, that was a great example of service and the way we can build trust and help make memories for our kids. So, I want to thank the fire department for that little, and give them a little kudos on that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. That's, that's really nice. Other matters from staff?
I think I would just like to make a comment and kind of maybe piggyback a little bit on Counselor Schlegel. If, I understand the citizens are frustrated, and I'm more than happy to go over calls for service and the overwhelming call volume and the overwhelming amount of arrests and citations that we issue on the regular. There's a heck of a lot of work going on out there. And I'm always available if you want to sit down, if you're interested in a ride-along. Maybe the gentleman that spoke earlier would like to go out with our community response team. I'm happy to open up the doors and share what goes on inside. We're pretty busy.
I just wanted to thank council for the action tonight on the rates. That helps solidify the rest of the water treatment plant project. J.C. and I will be now moving forward and soliciting for bonds. I'd be back in front of you with what those numbers look like. That's pretty major. Just got goosebumps, actually, a little bit. And lastly, Aaron did mention it, but I really want to go on the record. Kimberly Gasper, senior customer service and billing supervisor, is amazing. The work that she, Craig, Rod, and I want to mention Benjamin Okatete and Eli Hock, the two meter readers, the work that they have done through, from us never having read a meter ever in my entire career in- have done through, from us never having read a meter ever in my entire career, and I have passed 30 years with the city of Grants Pass, to taking it on and reading now well over 12,000 meters a month. That was a Herculean effort. And we did it without missing a billing cycle. Those people deserve a lot of kudos. Can't thank them enough for the work that they did. And the great news is, now we're getting monthly feedback on what meter boxes are going to need repairs, which meters aren't working, which was a missing piece with our contract. So it's a great decision, and it's working out really well.
Oh, that's really wonderful. Counselor Crowe, Kathleen?
I think I missed my opportunity, but I'll take it now. I just want to put a shout out for all the work I'm seeing happen on the water treatment plant. That is so exciting. There's so much activity out there, and I can't wait for an update on that.
So we're actually putting together a new monthly report that'll be coming out with the manager's report. So every month, you'll actually be getting an update in the manager's report that'll tell where they're at construction-wise, what's coming up, as well as where we're at financially with the project. And that'll be coming out, and you'll be getting monthly updates here shortly.
That's really fantastic. And so I think that we are now going to, with council's approval, adjourn and the session and open up the, and convene the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. So do I have a thumbs up for adjourn? And a thumbs up for entering? We are now entering and convening the Urban Renewal.
Go ahead, get a motion. A second.
Oh, a motion to open the Urban Renewal. Thank you. And a second? All right. And so all in favor of opening up for the Urban, convening the Urban Renewal Agency meeting? And we have a presentation.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council, members of the public. This should be really quick. There's a lot of words on here, and I will probably just kind of jump to the crux of it, so that we can continue on. You've already heard this once before, most of you. So the request before the board, the Urban Renewal Board tonight, relates to the property on Sixth Street, that I'm sure you've seen a lot of work going on. This is the old King Jewelers Building. And the request tonight is a time extension on the grant that was approved last year. So that's the topic for tonight. The grant is one of the Urban Renewal Agency's kind of standard capital-type project grants. It allows up to 25% eligible costs, not to exceed $50,000. So the property is owned by Scott and Patty Hilyer, who are the managers essentially of three different LLCs that are, that are working in Grants Pass. The Scopa Properties LLC is the one that is primarily involved with this project. So as I mentioned, you did in November of '24, passed Resolution 24-7499 for a grant related to certain types of improvements, fire suppression, and ADA and some other improvements to the property. The vast majority of the money, of course, in this project is private money. The Urban Renewal Agency is putting in the $50,000. And then they also did receive a grant through the Main Street for $400,000. As they got into the project, they realized that there was a lot of work to be done on the subgrade and the foundation underneath that building, that they, that it kind of extended out the time. And so they were not able to, to complete as much of the work as they thought they might by this point. It, as it's set today, this grant would expire next week. So they did come in, in time prior to the expiration, to ask for the time extension. So they're asking for one more year. So the money is basically, as you know, carries over in the Urban Renewal, the grant money from year. If it's unspent, then it gets carried over into the former year, or to the following year. So that's, that's basically where we're at. If the, if the URA Board is willing to extend that, then we have the funds, as mentioned on this slide, to put into the carryover, the $50,000. Those motions are on the back there behind me, and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do I have any questions? I don't see any questions, so I'll bring it back for discussion. Or, oh, oh, excuse me. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this topic? And so I, I don't see anyone. So we'll, now we will bring it back for discussion. Rick, and then Rob?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency amending the grant expect expiration date to November 6, 2026, for Resolution Number 247499, awarding Scopa Properties LLC an urban renewal building rehabilitation restoration grant for property located at 221 Southeast Sixth Street.
And I have a second. I have two seconds. Well, we'll save from Kathleen. And do we need a, just a vote, or?
Discussion.
Or any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. We'll start with Kathleen.
Yes.
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 Yes. And so it passes. And that is the last thing on our agenda. So I am looking for a motion. Eric?
I make a motion to adjourn.
And I see a second. Thumbs up for everyone if you wish to adjourn. And we are adjourned. Thank you.